Okay.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Troy City Council. This is the Finance Committee meeting. It is March 20th. Welcome spring. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Keel.
Present.
Councilmember Brosnan.
Present.
Councilmember McLaren.
Present.
Councilmember Vera.
Present.
Councilmember Sorrento.
Here.
And Councilmember Casey is absent. Council President Steele is present. At this point in time, we have a public forum based on our agenda this evening. So if anyone in the audience wishes to speak on any item on our agenda, we welcome you to come forward and give your remarks. Does anyone wish to speak on any agenda item this evening? One more time. This is your chance. Does anyone wish to speak on any agenda item? Seeing none, we'll move along to our agenda. First, we have two ordinances. Ordinance 15, ordinance approving settlement of tax surchargeary proceedings instituted by Jasco Realty LLC on the assessment role of the City of Troy Council President at the request of the administration. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
I'm going to give it to Councilmember Sorrento with a second by Councilmember Brosnan. Is there someone here to answer questions if we have any? Does, first of all, does any council member have any questions on this ordinance? You got in. You got in? No. No questions from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Six ayes, zero noes. Ordinance 16, ordinance amending the 2025 miscellaneous special revenue fund budget to accept funds from the Division of Homeland Security for the Targeted Violence Act and Terrorism Prevention Grant, Council President Steele at the request of the administration. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Councilmember McLaren with a second by Councilmember Brosnan. Discussion on the ordinance. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 16 is adopted 6-0. Moving on to resolutions. Resolution 26, a resolution to commemorate the service, life, and legacy of Camille A. Rezick by designating that portion of Ferry Street between Fourth Street and Fifth Avenue as Camille A. Rezick Way, home of Eastside. Councilmember present, Councilmember Sorrento at the request of the administration. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Councilmember. And second?
Second.
Councilmember Sorrento.
Is that, does that read right? Home of Eastside?
I believe.
Eastside Auto, the Eastside?
Irene, you're the councilmember Sorrento, you're the sponsor, and we have a question from Councilmember McLaren.
Okay.
I'm just wondering if, how that reads. Is it home of Eastside or of the Eastside or?
Home of Eastside.
Eastside Auto or?
As far as I know, it's home of Eastside. Okay.
Right. And our council will?
It came to my office as home of Eastside. I originally changed it to Eastside Auto, but then someone said maybe that's the way they wanted it, so.
Home of Eastside.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for the clarification. We wanted to make sure we got it right. Did you want to? Any, anyone want to join on as sponsors?
Uh, yeah. Council President.
Councilmember McLaren.
Could I also add my name as a sponsor on this?
Clerk, would you please make that notation? Thank you.
Um, Council President.
Councilman McLaren.
I'd just like to welcome the Rezick family. My son played baseball. Hello. So I'm happy to, to be part of this.
Council President. Councilmember Sorrento.
Want to say, I am, I'm truly honored to, to sponsor this resolution. I've known the Rezick family for many decades, so, oh, that made me just sound old, but I've known the Rezick family for, for several, you know, for several years, and they're very, very good people, and, and this is a true honor for me to sponsor this, this resolution.
Thank you. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to do this. Does anyone else wish to say anything? If not, I'll take role. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 26 is adopted unanimously. Resolution 27, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Rensselaer County Department of Mental Health to receive funding from the New York State Office of Addiction Service and Support Services, Council President Steele at the request of the administration. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Councilmember Brosnan with a second by Councilmember Sorrento. Discussion?
Council President.
Councilmember McLaren.
I just think, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm happy that this funding is available and that we're taking advantage of it. I think along with the increase in mental health services that are needed, you know, right along with that goes services for addiction and that kind of support. So I'm, I'm glad to see that we're doing this.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 27 is adopted 6-0. 28, resolution authorizing the mayor to contract with Comstar LLC for ambulance billing and collection services on a single source basis, Council President Steele at the request of the administration. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Councilmember Sorrento with a second by Councilmember Brosnan. Discussion on the resolution.
Council President.
Councilmember McLaren.
Um, I'm just curious, or just wondering, we, we've had Comstar in front of us. Is there something that's changed? Is that why we're seeing it again?
The prior resolution authorized us to go with a new billing rate to, to be comparable to other municipalities.
Right.
That provide similar services. This resolution formalizes our, at that time, we were on a holdover basis with a month-to-month, essentially, agreement. So this, this formalizes a relationship. I haven't fully vetted their contract yet, so that's why it says at the end of the resolution to be in substantial conformity, but the material terms should not change much, other than we're proposing that the agreement be for three years with an option to renew for two additional one-year extensions.
But the fees haven't changed. They're?
The fees are what you agreed to a month ago, maybe.
Thanks.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 28 is adopted 6-0. Resolution 29, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement for the provision of consultant services by Nancy Piscus, Council President Steele at the request of the administration. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Councilmember Sorrento, second?
Second.
Councilmember Keel? Discussion?
Uh, Council President.
Councilmember Vera?
Is there somebody to, from the administration to discuss where we're at with filling that position, assuming Nancy's leaving that position vacant?
We've had a few applicants, and I think another one is scheduled for interview early next week. The, the other applicants didn't, it didn't pan out, but, uh, so we're still in the process of the applicant to be interviewed next week is an experienced purchasing agent, so we're hopeful of that.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay.
And we've known Nancy's plans for quite some time, correct?
I've, I've known them for about six weeks, maybe, or so. I'm not sure. I mean, we knew she was getting close to retirement, but I didn't know her actual date of retirement.
And how long have we been interviewing?
I don't know.
Any other comments?
Council President.
Councilmember McLaren.
So if, if the person that gets hired is an experienced purchasing agent, will this contract be necessary?
I think so. We want continuity. Nancy has a lot of institutional knowledge and a lot, and her experience with the purchasing office has been extremely successful. I've been really happy with her work, and I hope that she will be able to impart to her successor, her ethic and her, her approach and how she handles it. The, you know, obviously whoever follows her will have their own modes and means, but Nancy is, Nancy is a stickler for details, and that's what we like.
Okay. And, and do we have any idea how, you know, are we talking 100 hours? Are we talking 20 hours? Do we have any idea the longevity of, of this?
I think it might, I think we said it expires at the end of the year. I'm not sure, less extended by mutual agreement, but I, I really don't think it's going to take, it depends on who gets hired. It's hard to make an estimate, I'm sorry. I, I just don't know how much training the person will need. If the person has a lot of experience, they'll need less training.
Right.
And if new, if they're brand new, then they'll need more. Okay?
Thank you.
We did, we have done this, we did this for the city clerk, we did this for the comptroller's position previously. So we've done it several times.
This is a civil service position, though, correct?
The purchasing agent is a civil service position, correct?
The others were not. But, at any rate.
No, I mean.
Do we know, do we have any idea where this is budgeted from?
Honestly, I don't know right now.
Gabrielle, can you help us with that?
Well, we would pay for it out of the consultant line that we have in our comptroller appropriation.
And how much is there?
Off the top of my head, I don't know at this time. I couldn't get back to you on that.
Taking out of, with BST and that we took ProNexus, all of those guys out of?
Yeah, so we don't really know how much we would be spending for the consultant, for her consultant agreement, because we don't know how many hours she's going to be working. We are actively interviewing, and we, we could have somebody in there, you know, very soon that may not need a lot of training, so it's possible that we won't expend a lot out of that, but we will need her a little bit to go over things with the new hire. Depending on who we hire, who replaces her will determine how much we need. We would look at that, and we would, if, if needed, we would probably propose a transfer if, if necessary.
Council President. Councilmember Sorrento.
I, I think this is a really good move, only because the incumbent coming in is going to need to learn their vendors, they're gonna, they're gonna need to know their point of contacts, they're gonna need that, that type of training. And so I think for a temporary basis, it is good for Nancy to step in and, you know, provide the incumbent with, with the point of contacts and the training, and plus, you know, they might not be, they, they might not know what the, the actual system is, although, you know, they could be different in other, in other municipalities or in other agencies, so I am going to fully support this.
I'm, I'm just concerned that we have no, there's no parameters here. We, we have, we're, we're writing a blank check. We have no idea how many hours we're talking about, how many, how length of time, you know, it's, it's just kind of wide open. But that's my personal opinion.
I wanted to clarify, there was one consultant agreement, it was actually for Gabrielle, which Selina Skipper did, that you approved, and hers is a
Right.
Her encumbered position is a civil service position. So, okay.
Thank you.
And that, it's actually in the bargaining unit. And as far as the hours, I mean, I'm pretty careful with public money. I don't see this going to any extreme whatsoever. Nancy doesn't want to work a whole bunch. She already ruled out Mondays and Fridays, and it, it, I think it'll be accomplished efficiently. I'm sorry, you don't have to take my word for it, but I would really urge you to approve this one.
Yeah, thank you. Any other comments, questions? Thank you both. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution is adopted 6-0. Resolution 30, resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding by and between the Village of Green Island and the City of Troy, Council's President Steele at the request of the administration. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Councilmember Sorrento with a second by Councilmember McLaren. Discussion?
Council President.
Councilmember Brosnan.
What are we, what does the mutual aid look like in this situation? Saying equipment and workers, what, what equipment would we be giving away or getting?
I don't think we've used anything with Green Island for a few years. I have not seen this agreement before. I think it was entered into maybe in '23 or something like that, but I don't know why I didn't see it. Mayor McNulty sent it over and asked us to enter into it. It's the same as has been done, it has been done in prior years. I look at it and as simply an authorization for municipal cooperation in the event they require anything or we require anything. We have similar agreements, they're more detailed, I agree, with Colony, and we have other mutual aid agreements with Water of Lee and things like that, but we have not been, had to use much equipment from Green Island, but I guess it's in anticipation of something we have breaks down, they have one we needed, it's an emergency, or vice versa.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 30 is adopted 6-0. Resolution 31 has been withdrawn by sponsor. At this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Don't everyone speak at once here? I'll say, Councilmember Brosnan with a second by Councilmember Sorrento. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. We're adjourned.